Commissioner Lezak?
Here.
Commissioner Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Strongman?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Chair Reiser?
Here.
And Vice Chair Ward is absent tonight. We have a quorum with six.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda is consent calendar, and seeing no consent calendar, we will move on to public communication. The public communication portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the commission cannot act on items raised during public communications but may only respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Are there any attendees in the chamber that wish to speak under public communications? Any members online? Not members, I'm sorry. Yeah, members of the public online.
No, we just have a staff person online, no members of the public.
Very good, thank you. And moving on, next item on our agenda is public hearings. We'll start by asking if any of the commission has had any ex parte communications related to items on this evening's agenda. A lot of wagging heads, so that's a no. We'll move on to the first public hearing, which is the Walden Garden Townhomes tentative subdivision condo map, application number Y-20-052. We'll turn it over to Simmer Gill for a presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the City, and we are here tonight to consider the tentative subdivision map for the Walden Garden Townhouse Development. That will be located at 1394 Walden Road. The applicant representing the project, Ed Novak, and his team are here tonight, as am I, if you have any questions after the presentation. And just to quickly go over the project site, the location is indicated with the red arrows and consists of two parcels, which includes 1394 Walden and a small strip of land along Shady Lane. The site is currently developed with a home that will be demolished for proposed construction. The surrounding area consists of a mix of single-family homes and multifamily development. This project is being processed under the Housing Accountability Act, as it is a residential development with multiple housing units and was designed to meet the city's objective development standards. The Housing Accountability Act, also known as SB 330, does limit this project to a maximum of five hearings, and tonight it is the fourth public hearing for this project. And to go over the project entitlements, I did want to point out that typically the design review, or the design of any new project, is typically approved by the Design Review Commission. However, this project is unique due to the Walden Oak overlay zone that was established in 1981 and did state that the design review approval of any new multifamily development on this site requires City Council approval. So on August 2nd of 2022, City Council approved the building design, the site design, the density bonus waivers, the tree removals, and the tree drip line encroachment permits in accordance with the required findings that are applicable to those aspects of the project. And pursuant to the city's subdivision ordinance, the planning commission must take action on the tentative map. So tonight, this requested entitlement for the map is only to allow the individual ownership of the eight approved units. And just a quick project summary, the City Council approved the design review for the eight-unit townhouse development. The units will be located in four three-story buildings. The project also provides one affordable unit, and each unit includes a two-car garage. One guest parking stall is also located in the north end of the site. And the City Council also approved three density bonus waivers that were associated with this project: the eight tree removals for eight trees on-site, tree drip line encroachment permits, and also new landscaping for the site. And now moving on to the map. The tentative map will create eight airspace condominiums for the purposes of allowing individual sale of each unit. The common areas, including the driveway, the drainage facilities, and landscaping, will be subject to maintenance by a homeowners' association, and each private yard will be the responsibility of the individual owner as it's for their exclusive use. And typical curb, gutter, and sidewalk were not required for this project per the city's Public Works Department, as Walden Road is a narrow street that is offset to the north from the center line of the public right-of-way. That condition did make it difficult to install the standard curb, gutter, and sidewalk without doing a significant roadway realignment, and it was well beyond the limits of this project. However, the city did require a new five-foot-wide walkable path that will be constructed along the project frontage for pedestrians, and the project also includes two new streetlights and also street trees along the Walden frontage. And in order to approve a tentative map, the following findings are required. Staff did evaluate the project and determine that it complies with the tentative map findings as the map is consistent with the general plan, the zoning, and the overlay zone. The project was designed to comply with the M-2.5 zoning development standards in terms of meeting all setbacks, lock coverage requirements, and building height. The map is also consistent with the city's general plan policies and goals related to quality of life, which does support redevelopment in existing urban areas, and requires that residential projects be developed within the established minimum and maximum density ranges. And the project also addresses the city's housing needs by providing one affordable unit. And for the second finding, the project does comply as the site design includes private yard spaces, and the building designs include outdoor decks, windows, and doors to promote the flow through of sunlight and air. Additionally, the landscape plan also included 16 new trees that will be planted throughout the site. The existing and the new trees combined will provide shade within the new development and along the street frontage. And the project will also be subject to building code standards, which requires installation of efficient cooling and heating systems. And with that, staff does recommend that the planning commission approve the tentative map for the Walden Townhouse Development, subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution. That is all I have, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Simmer. We'll turn it over to the commissioners. Any questions?
Thank you for your great presentation, and thank you for responding to my email on Labor Day, which comes to the first question, why were you working on Labor Day?
Because I get emails on my phone, so if I have it, I check it.
Thank you anyhow. Which unit is the slightly more affordable unit?
It's, should I go back to the, it's Unit 1.
Would it be Building 1?
Sorry, yeah, Unit 1, Building 1, to the far right. Yes, it's a two-bedroom.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, what was, typically, my experience has been that when you have a road condition like this that's kind of, you know, been there for a long time and requiring frontage improvements isn't practical, which it's clear it's not in this case, but commonly, a deferred improvement agreement is applied to the property so that if in 10 years or 15 years, the roadway, the character of it changes, and someone wants to go in and make it a full width road, that the property that's getting developed and the benefit of that today pays for their share of the frontages. Was there any discussion about that?
We do have the city engineer on the line to elaborate, but I believe there's, we have the easement, the PAE easement, so if there's further details that she can share or elaborate, we can call on Kathleen.
Yes, Kathleen Tarrantiaf from our Public Works Department is on, and her camera's on now. Here she is. She can answer the question for you.
Yes, you know, typically, this is, if we thought that, sorry, this is Kathleen Tarrantiaf, City of Walnut Creek Engineering. If we thought that that would be an option down the road, we would have considered that, but given this, the location of the project, we opted to instead encourage the applicant, and they complied, to put in the walkway, not a sidewalk per se, to provide immediate benefit to the neighborhood rather than defer improvements down the road, and we don't feel it's very likely, given the very rural nature of this street. It will probably remain as a street without curb and gutter, and so that was the thinking behind it.
Okay, so you would envision this improvement that's going in now as basically being permanent, and if the road ever does change character, that this would be incorporated into that new road improvement?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lezak?
Had a couple minor ones. So I understand that there's one affordable housing unit being built, but isn't the city ordinance require 15% affordable housing?
14%, and they're providing that. Do you want?
Is it, oh, so the percentage is lower for a subdivision of less than 10 units or something like that?
Oh, go ahead if you like.
I presume you're referring to the city's inclusionary housing requirement?
Yes.
That's for moderate income. Is this moderate?
This is moderate.
10%. However, the state law allows the inclusionary units to be counted towards meeting a state density bonus, which is 14%.
14%.
Yeah, the state law requires 14% of the units be affordable to get a density bonus, which is what they've done, and they can count that inclusionary unit towards that 14%.
I see. Okay, so that's where the density bonus calculation comes in. It's over the 10%, and 10% is all that's required in this case because of the size of the subdivision.
Well, all, any multifamily for sale developments, it's a 10% requirement for moderate income.
So I'm looking at the tentative map, and I note that the tentative map makes a note that says that the maximum building height is 30 feet, and then I look at the sheet A6 of the, the design review package, and it shows this north side elevation, the building is 32 feet 6 inches. So what, what allows the building to be 32 feet and when the tentative map says it's maximum of 30?
Yeah, 30 feet is the height limit per the M-2.5 zone. However, the Walnut Creek Municipal Code does have a provision that allows four feet of additional building height for projects that have a roof area that's over, I believe, if 75% of the roof area has a roof pitch that's 312 or greater, then they get that additional allowance, and this project does meet that requirement. So essentially, it meets the building height requirement per our code. And Attachment 4 of your agenda packet actually has the approved design review plans. That also includes the roof plans, and in there, they actually show the different roof pitches.
And that's what I'm looking at, yeah. And so if the building height is over 30 feet, even if that meets the city's standard for, you know, for that exception, does that have any other impact, any other building code or site development standards that would affect our tentative map?
No, that actually is allowed under, for building height in our, in the code.
For building height in the code.
In the code, yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. A good, very good presentation. The, on the affordable unit, that the price were to be resold would be constrained by?
There's, there's an agreement that is signed, yes, and is locked in for 45 years.
45 years, thank you.
Yeah.
On the easement for the pedestrian path, that's an easement that will be granted by the owner to the city?
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed that on the, it looks like a multifamily development on the corner to the east of there, looks like there's already a.
Try to go back to the map if it shows it. That doesn't help.
It doesn't have it, but to the east, it looks like there is a similar pathway around, around that corner. So this, perhaps this is the second one that has had a similar approach to.
Are we talking about to the east or to the north?
To the east. The corner of Oak and.
If there's an easement on that property to the east?
It appears that there's a, looks like about a five-foot path around that property.
I think I'll have.
Are you referring to the corner property at Oak and Walden? Just going off my memory here, but it's a multifamily development. I believe it has a concrete sidewalk on its two frontages. I can double-check with Google. But that portion of the street is also much wider. It narrows down once it passes through there.
But is the, is the intention, at this point at least, until sometime in the future generation when they widen the road, that the, that five-foot kind of pedestrian path will be continued along the entire street as other things get developed?
When the other properties, yeah, hopefully, come in and looking to develop, then they would be required, and then the widening could occur. But just for one property, like, like I mentioned earlier, they would have to realign the entire roadway.
Right.
They would be required, yeah.
You know, if another property develops a couple years from now, another one five years from now.
Yeah.
Presumably, they would be, have the same kind of.
Correct.
Easement arrangement with the.
That is correct.
Smaller pedestrian path. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Needy.
My first question, has the fire department looked at this?
Fire department, yes, they have.
And they, because it looks like the total depth is 165 feet, which is beyond the 150. They were okay. I'm just thinking about from fighting, fighting profession, do they go in and then they're gonna back, they're gonna go in and just back out?
The detailed plans will be presented to them after entitlements. However, I believe the architect has been in talks with the fire department, so I will defer that question to them so they can give us more information on the arrangement.
So the architect?
The project architect is here tonight.
And I can.
We'll get to.
Oh, yeah.
I can also add that the plans were routed to the fire district, and they did provide comments, and for whatever reason, didn't request, you know, a hammerhead or a.
Right.
Turnaround at the end there.
And then, this might be a question when they do the presentation, but I noticed that there's a sanitary sewer easement, but not a easement for the fire department.
That again, I believe, is going to be addressed as part of the SDP, but again, Kathleen may be able to talk on, onto that.
Yeah, I'll ask Kathleen from Engineering to come back on. She can speak to that.
Because someone could park, someone could.
That's correct.
Park right there, and then how does the fire truck fight the fire?
So I see Kathleen is on. She could speak to the easement.
Right, I think when, so this is the tentative map. When the final map comes in, you're correct, there's only shown a sanitary sewer easement for central sand. There would likely need to also just be a public utility easement for all the utilities serving the units going into there, as well as an EVAE, an emergency vehicle access easement. So that will be taken care of in the final map.
I would assume it would be a condition? I don't know. For safety, just.
Right. I just wanted to point out, the current resolution, part of the conditions incorporate the City Council's resolution, which has a, which has the general requirement that the developer comply with all Contra Costa County Fire Protection District requirements. So I don't know if I heard your question correctly, but I guess I just want to reiterate that that condition exists in the project. I mean, developer has to comply.
2242?
Correct.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Thank you.
One more from Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, just following up on that, it appears that the road actually goes almost to the back property line of the, of the property. On the other side of that property line is another road. So I presume that there would be some possibility of at least doing an arrangement where the fire truck, if it came in, could simply pass through.
Are you referring to El Paso Court, or Circle, I should say?
Yeah.
It's actually a private street that development's kind of self-contained there. So as.
No, it doesn't connect the roads. I'm just saying, there are some places where only fire trucks are allowed to go through. You know, there's a electronic control on the fence or whatever. That may be a solution if it turns out that is an issue.
All good? Here we go. For now. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and the applicant has 15 minutes to give a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Ed Novak. I'm the project architect. I really don't need to add any more to Simmer's presentation, so I'll just address the fire concerns. We, as in all of our multifamily projects, work with, you know, Contra Costa Fire Department closely. We have been in communication with them. As far as the, the roadway, yes, may be longer than 150 feet, but their truck can come in within 150 feet and reach any point around our buildings within 150 feet. So they're fine with that, to come in and pull back out. As far as the access, the, our drive aisle will be signed as far as, you know, no parking along either edge of the. along either edge of those sides, because it is going to be required as far as our safety access. We hope not to paint red curbs like you see sometimes, and we hope the signage is enough to get people to comply with this ordinance, but if they don't, we will go to that step as well. And then as far as, you know, height of the building, we are, you know, yes, the building is technically over 30 feet, but we are within the height requirements. As far as Contra Costa is concerned, as long as our eve line is less than 30 feet, they're okay with it going above 30 feet when it rises, you know, to the peaks, to their highest points. And I verified today before coming up tonight that the eve line on both buildings is 28 feet 11 inches, and I do have one section of the building that has a parapet on its exterior wall, and that one comes in at 29 feet 11, 10 and 1/2 inches, you know, right under that 30 mark. So all around the whole perimeter of our buildings, that top level meets the counties, the Contra Costa County Fire Department's requirement for, you know, access, ladder access.
Great. Thanks for your time.
If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions of the commissioners for the architect and applicant?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner.
How are you anticipating handling guest parking?
So we're required by city standards to provide the one gas place, spot, which we have provided, you know, to the back left corner of the site. It's a full-size parking space with full backup maneuvering behind it. As far as, you know, additional parking, you know, people will probably have to park on public streets where parking is allowed and walk into the site.
Is parking going to be allowed on the new sidewalk that you're building? Is that frontage going to allow for parking along there?
That is, I believe, a condition that there is no parking. I believe it's already posted, no parking along Walden there. And I, you know, at least at all our hearings, we've proceeded to, without knowing that there will be no parking along Walden.
Yeah, so the only, the only guest parking is that one.
That one spot.
Satisfies the city's.
Standards.
Standards, okay.
We also, in conjunction with that, our HOA will have a rule that enforces tenant, you know, owners, or people that live in their residences, park their cars in the resident, you know, in their two-car garage. So it's not, you know, it's a case of, we're not going to allow the garage to be used for other purposes than, you know, parking vehicles.
Right. And what do you anticipate about garbage pickup and garbage cans?
So we've worked with waste management on that, it was the Republic, right? And the, there'll be tote bins stored in the private yards of each unit. On trash day, they will be pulled out and staged in front of their garage doors.
So the private yards are in the back.
Yes.
And each resident, it looks to me like each resident has a gate.
Yes.
That they can bring their garbage around the side of the unit out to the street.
Right.
And.
And each garage has room inside, if the residents so choose to put their totes inside for storage, that is a possibility as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Needing?
Sorry, I just heard you say, and I'm reading it in 63.1, that the parking in the garages can't be used for anything but park, but park, sorry, the garages can't be used anything but parking, but technically, can't someone put an ADU in there? So you, I.
From a, I can answer that one. From a regulatory standpoint, the city does have to issue permits for ADUs within the garage areas and cannot require replacement parking as per state law. And the city also does not enforce the CCNRs, you know, HOA regulations. So just from a city regulation standpoint, that that's true. However, I will note that that condition exists throughout the city and also applies to multifamily housing. So apartment buildings, for example, you know, the, your kind of typical, you know, where you have tuck-under parking in, say, two or three floors of apartments above. In that case, under state law and local ordinance, they could actually convert most of the, most or potentially all of those parking spaces into ADUs without having to provide replacement parking. The state law has been opened up pretty wide in that regard.
Right. I think that's probably why the DRE is updating its PRAG.
Yeah, we had that conversation.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. And at this time, we will open it up to the public. Any members of the public wish to provide public comments at this time? Anybody join us online since last time? Anybody in the chamber?
We do have one member of the public now attending on Zoom. I would ask if they do wish to provide public comment, to press the raise hand button to let us know, and if they do that, we'll let them in. And I am not seeing anything, so it looks like we have no public comment, and we also, let me double-check, have no written public comment either.
Very good. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for any additional questions, deliberation, or perhaps a motion. Commissioner Lezak?
I'd like to make a motion to approve tentative subdivision map number 9546, the Walden Gardens Townhomes, application number Y 20-052.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, can we get roll?
Yes, Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Reiser?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Very good, thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So at this time, we will, any commissioner, commission considerations?
We have none on the agenda tonight.
Nothing with regard to, they didn't move with?
Well, that would be the staff reports or announcements.
Got it. Next up, Commissioner, remember, our staff reports or announcements.
It's up to you, if you'd like commissioners or staff to go first.
Let's go staff.
Okay. So what you were, I think, inquiring about with regard to the time change, requested time change for the start of the planning commission meetings, just last night, actually, the Design Review Commission made the same recommendation to the city council to move their time to 6 o'clock. And so now the next step is that the city clerk will be bringing the commission rules and procedures, I think procedure number 102, or regulation number 102, or something like that. But anyway, she'll be taking that to the city council for consideration, along with some other changes, I guess, that are in store for that. And I don't have the exact date, but I think she's looking at one of the meetings in October. Assuming that the city council does adopt that change, after that point, then the planning commission and design review commission would start their meetings at 6 o'clock rather than 7 o'clock.
Any public notice type of requirements?
Public notice for the.
The time change, or is it just a particular meeting?
Oh, just has, it just has to be on the agenda.
Got it.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, per se, in the form of, like, a use permit as a notice public hearing sort of thing. So there's that. And then one other item that you might actually all be interested in, just last night, supposed to have been in the paper printed today, I didn't see it this morning, but that may have been behind the sports section, which my son was reading, but I saw it online last night in the San Francisco Chronicle, our, one of our Walnut Creek native sons, John King, who is their urban design critic, actually released a pretty long article entitled Bart Has Carried Riders for 50 Years. It Also Changed How the Bay Area Lives. As you probably are aware, Bart is turning 50 on the 11th, and although they didn't start operating out here until 1974, but the article talks about basically development along the, with, along the Bart system, and particularly focused around the Bart stations, and his article pays particular attention to his hometown of Walnut Creek, speaking to the developments, particularly, say, the Golden Triangle area around the Bart station, and some of the public reaction to some of that change that manifested itself, particularly in the mid-1980s with Measure A, which is the height limit, which is still in effect, the Height Freeze Initiative, I think is what it was called, and then there was also a Measure H, which greatly limited the maximum floor area of any new development. That was challenged in court by Dean Lesher, and went all the way to the California Supreme Court and was overturned, I believe, on a technicality, but we still do have Measure A, and that's actually mentioned, discussed in this article. So if you happen to be a Chronicle subscriber, you can pop on there, and I'm, I'll plan on also sending around the link, which you may or may not be able to go through the pay wall, depending on how many free articles you've already read. So, yeah, but I would encourage you to take a look, it's an interesting read. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you so much. Anything else? All right, with that, we will adjourn at 7:31. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Thank you.